Meeting to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Good evening, my name is Linda Hofela. I am the board secretary. This is our board reorganization meeting, and at this time, we have an absence of a board president and vice presidents. I am assuming the role temporarily until one can be elected tonight. The first thing I would like to do is have the pledge allegiance, so would everyone stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to announce the final election results for the school board members. We had three candidates and three votes cast. Ruth Byer received 3,439 votes. Monique Coleman received 3,542 votes. Robert Magaziner received 3,412 votes. At this time, I would like to invite the newly-elected board members to read after me the oath of office, which I have provided with each of you. It says required oath. I know it's in there. There you go. Does everyone have theirs? Ruth, Monique, and Rob. Okay. Is everyone ready? Okay. Repeat after me, please. I do solemnly affirm
I do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and to the governments established in the United States and this state
and to the governments established in the United States and this state
under authority of the people
under authority of the people
and I do affirm
and I do affirm
that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
for the office of a member of a board of education
for the office of a member of a board of education
and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
perform all the duties of that office
perform all the duties of that office
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter
pursuant to RS 19:4-1
pursuant to RS 19:4-1
and I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense
and I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense
listed in NJSA 18A:12-1
listed in NJSA 18A:12-1
Congratulations and welcome back to the board.
Thank you.
If you would please sign each of the forms, I will then sign, in fact, I'm going, I should have given you another one. I will be signing another copy for you, and then, yeah, just turn to the ones that you have signed. I will sign one to give to you, which you can then sign and keep.
Got it.
Okay. Okay. At this time, I would like to conduct the roll call of the board of education. Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrebono? Mr. Roslevich? At this, okay, and the next order of business is to elect the president. I will call the roll in alphabetical order. Let me get that. I have it right here. Okay, we have a few ways that we can do this. My script says that I will call your name, you will respond by indicating your nomination and supporting vote for the office of president. The other option would be to call for a nomination, a motion, and a second. So, I would prefer the latter, if everyone is in agreement with that? Okay. So, I would ask if there is a nomination for the office of president?
I'd like to nominate Darcy Simorusti.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. We have a nomination on the floor for Ms. Simorusti. Is there any discussion? Okay. At this time, I will take a roll call. Please vote yes or no, or abstain. Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan? Sorry. She is not here. Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti, welcome back to the presidency. Congratulations. At this time, we're going to do a little bit of musical chairs. We are going to restructure ourselves alphabetically. So, Darcy will take this seat, I will go back to my old seat.
I'll be right, because Dan's not here. Right. I'll be right. Yes. Yep, yep, yep.
Well, thank you, everyone. I'm very excited to remain president. Strangely enough, this is the fourth year, which that doesn't even seem possible, but it is. It's the beginning of year four.
As president, but not on the board. How many years have you been on the board?
Let's not talk about that.
Six.
Since you were a child.
Although, this is the
Seven.
But this is the last year of my second term, so
Wow.
this is year six, and then a little bit before that, so wow. But, I mean, I think that's the interesting thing, right? And why, I kind of enjoy this process at the beginning of every year, because, you know, I think we've all really grown into our roles, and, you know, like, kind of identify with our committees and our positions, and, you know, like, take ownership of that. So, it's really nice to see that. I have nobody to look at over there. Oh, there's no board members there. Who's we? Stop. You know, so it's really nice to kind of reaffirm that at the beginning of every year. Like, okay, let's get back to work, let's do what we do. So, I'm really glad we're all here again, and I'm really glad to be back in my seat, so thank you. So, the next thing that we need to do is elect a vice president. So, I'd like to do it the same way that Linda just did it. We'll call for a nomination and a second, and go from there. So, are there any nominations for vice president?
I'll nominate Ann Gowan.
Excellent. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? No? Okay. Saying done, Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Excellent. Unfortunately, Ann could not be with us this evening at the last minute. She had a family emergency that came up, but I know she's just as excited to continue the work that we've been doing for the last four years. So, we will get back to doing that at our next meeting when Ann is here with us. So, the next thing on our agenda is the discussion and signing of the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest, and Ms. Hofela gets to do that for us.
Actually, Dr. Taylor will say a few words.
Oh, okay.
I'll just want to emphasize a couple of points that are not necessarily made in the Code of Ethics that you list that you have to sign, some of the off-the-record things. For instance, I will remind everyone the importance of recognizing the dual roles that most of you play as both parents and members of the board. I think things have been going very well in that regard, and so we should continue on that path when working to effect change in the school district. We are here for the benefit of everybody, not just our own. And that applies to me, too, as a parent here, as well as a superintendent. Also want to remind everyone of the importance of the board's own chain of command, i.e., when a board member would like to communicate something to the district's administration, it's most appropriate to go through the board president, who will then pass along the information to me. And I will do the same in many cases. If I have a message to send off to the board, outside of a news item of some sort, I'll likely go through Darcy, in most cases, to pass that information along to you. Everything else, I think, is codified, and because we have all been doing this for at least a year, if not more, I don't think it's necessary to repeat everything that you've listed here. Linda, anything that you would like to add?
I don't believe so. As you mentioned, the board members are all seasoned at this point, at least with one or more years. So, with continued required training, I think that they're, it'll just reinforce what they already have been trained on.
Excellent. So, Linda, do you do the
Oh, so, what I have, I have distributed the, I'm sorry, the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest documents, and each of you need to sign the document that affirms that you received the copy and participated in the discussion, or at least, we're here for the discussion, and return the signed copy of that document to me. I need a copy from each of you.
So, you guys have these two, and then this is the one that we need to sign, and
It's called required document.
Send back over, and it's the same one that we signed.
I signed it.
Yeah, that's a fancy signature. God, now I feel intimidated, Rob. Can't match that signature.
That's mine.
That's Michelle's?
Yeah, mine doesn't look like that.
Oh, all right.
Even better.
One of the only good things about going to Catholic school.
All right. So, if anybody wants to just sign them now and pass them on down?
Some of us did already.
Huh? Oh, you're already Okay, fantastic. All right, so that's one more thing off of our list. So, then, as you guys all recall, the next things that we need to do are reappoint folks to our different liaison positions and other roles. So, the first one on the agenda, item number 10, is the delegate and alternate to the New Jersey School Boards Association. I would love to continue doing that, because it's been something that I've been very interested in since I joined the board, how the board can interact with our state association and use that, that one avenue that we're given, to try to impact the direction of the state association. So, I would love to continue doing that, and I think, Michelle, I saw you were the the
Yes, I was the backup.
Yes, the backup dancer. The alternate.
Backup dancer sounds good.
And so, Linda, we can kind of do these a couple at a time, right? And then just move them all at the same time, or should we move them one at a time?
No, you can move them as a group.
As a group, okay, great. And then, delegate and alternate to Middlesex County School Boards Association, Rob Roslevich had been in that position previously, and it is my understanding that he's okay staying there. And then I was the alternate, and I'm happy to maintain in that position as well. All right. And then, number 12 is just all of the other resolutions that we have to adopt every year are the newspapers of record, the treasurer of school monies, the list just kind of goes on and on, from A through L. Did anybody have any questions about any of those appointments?
No.
Okay. And then, the number 13 are additional appointments for Linda as our business administrator, to be the board secretary, Susan to be the substitute board secretary, which, you know, every time we do this, Linda, it makes me realize that you never miss a meeting.
There was one.
I don't
There was one.
I can't remember a time since I've been here that you missed a meeting.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah.
Well, there was the one where I think that Dr. Taylor did the roll call and took the, all the votes, but Susan O'Doto wrote the minutes from
Really? Once, once.
I think that was Friday.
That was before you.
That was Friday.
I think that was your real
Because I couldn't handle that job. I mean, that's not something I could do.
It's been long enough that I do not remember such an occurrence.
Well, you know there's scheduled board members around my
So, just kudos to Linda for being the most steadfast board secretary around.
Yes.
And, you know, lots of other positions. So, we have A through, holy moly, do we even have enough letters of the alphabet for all the ones that we have here? A through Z. Well, that's convenient. How did that work out, that we happened to have A through Z? That's quite, that's quite impressive. So, did anybody have any questions about any of those appointments for those positions?
Yep.
All right. So, why don't we move those? I'm going to move those, and then we'll move on to communications. So, I'm going to move items 12 through 13. 12 and 13.
No, 10.
Oh, 10, is it 10?
10.
Oh, yeah, 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 with the delegate, sorry. Yeah, 10 through 13.
A second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? No? Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Okay, so, next on our agenda is something that I think we're all feeling a little crummy The one communication on our agenda today is a communication from Judy Pietrebono, our friend and colleague, who at the end of last year, sent an email to all of us tendering her resignation. So, we will definitely have a meeting sometime soon in the future where we can bring Judy back and recognize her for her time on the board. When I responded back to Judy, you know, the first thing that I thought of was, you know, Judy joined the board just as her boys were leaving the district, you know, at a time where most people are like running out the door like, "Thanks, everybody." Judy like doubled down on her commitment to the district, which is pretty amazing. And she, you know, Judy's this kind of like very mild-mannered, unassuming person, and it wasn't until she joined the board that I really realized what a talented, smart, capable human being she is. She really brought a lot of her skills from her professional career to her role as a board member, and I think did a really, really great job as the chair of personnel, and really overcame like a lot of, when she first started coming to board meetings, when, you know, Highland Park kind of turned upside down there for a year or two, she was like the most reticent person to speak in public, to, it was not her thing. Like, being in a public position was not somewhere she wanted to be. And I think it took a lot for her to do that, and then a lot to become a board member, and she really, like, she just, she was amazing to watch, and I really, really enjoyed working with her. So, she will, she will definitely be missed. So, we wanted to lay out this evening how we will go about finding someone to take Judy's seat, since clearly no one will replace her, but we do need to fill her seat. So, I think Linda will be publicizing that starting tomorrow, is that the plan?
Yes, we'll be publishing the vacancy, and do you want to
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, what will happen once we open, once we open up that process, is folks can, anybody at home, anybody listening, or anybody watching, can send in a letter of interest and resume to Ms. Hofela's office, and she will be collecting those. And we'll leave that period open until, let's see, today is the 21st, so I think we had talked about leaving that open until right before our next meeting. Linda? Oh, sorry. Right, 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 sorry. Opening up tomorrow until the 21st.
We know you operate in the future.
Yeah, 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 there you go. So, at our meeting at the, oh, no, no, no.
The 21st.
21st, right. That is when we're going to leave it open till. We're going to leave it open until the 21st, and then at our meeting on the 28th, we'll all take a look at the letters of interest and the resumes that we get, and decide which folks we would like to bring back for an interview, and we will interview them at our first board meeting in February, which is on February 11th. So, the process that we've done for those interviews in the past is we bring back whatever folks we invite to come in for interviews, they're interviewed in public, the board agrees on a set of questions that those individuals will be asked, each person is asked those same set of questions, one at a time. So, you know, it's kind of like this fun process where we put everybody's name in a hat and pull them out, like, fun for us, like pulling names out of a hat, not so much for the folks being interviewed.
It's my memory.
Right. So, as one, as the order that we put, you know, put folks in there, that person, the first person will stay, other folks will go into different locations in the school, so that each person gets the opportunity to answer the questions without anybody having the opportunity to hear the questions first. And then, once we are finished conducting the interviews, the board gets to then convene in, or to go into closed session, to discuss the candidate's qualifications, and then we come back out into open session, and we kind of do the same process that we just did for president and vice president, where there are nominations and seconds, and then each board member votes on any nominations. So, that is how that process will go. So, and Linda, you usually have something that's printed up with all the dates and the expectations, so, and that'll go out to the newspapers of record, and we'll send it out to our local paper, to the Highland Park Planet, we'll make sure that they have that, too, in case they're interested in doing something. So, and it will be put up on the board website, and, yep, and we'll try to make sure that that gets around and out to as many people as possible. So, so that is how that will go. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Just that there's qualifications, so that you have to have lived in Highland Park for, I believe, a year, you have to be a voter, et cetera.
Yep. Yep. So, we will move on to the president's report, which, again, for our reorganization meeting, is mostly about filling out our committees, but I did want to bring up one thing, because I think this is just kind of one of the more exciting things that has happened in education policy in New Jersey in quite some time, which is that on January 2nd, the appellate division, a three-judge panel of the appellate division of the Superior Court of New Jersey struck down the regulations that govern our graduate, the use of park as a graduation requirement. So, basically, the DOE is going to have to figure out what to do real fast. And the decision was based on something that, you know, we've talked about as a board, we've talked about, and we've gone to the state board to testify, that the regulations did not comply with state statute. State statute was very, very clear that the graduation, the exit exam requirement was to be given to students in 11th grade, and it was to be a test of basic skills. The park tests that the Department of Education came up with and the state board approved were tests that were given to some students as early as the summer before their 7th grade year, in algebra 1 test, and then the ELA test was in grade 10. So, to have a three-judge unanimous opinion saying, "Yeah, no, that's not right."
We told them so.
Yeah, exactly. There were a lot of people, there were a lot of people in the state of New Jersey who went, "We told you so. We've been trying to tell you for years." So, now, the Department of Education has 30 days to decide how they're going to act. They have, the court stayed their decision for 30 days to give the department the opportunity to decide if they're going to appeal to the Supreme Court, and if they do, we'll just be in a holding pattern until the Supreme Court decides what they're going to do. But the hope is that this will push the department and the governor to make right what has been wrong for quite some time, and our students will not be forced to sit for exams that are not, that do not comply with our state statute and what was intended by the legislature as a, as a, you know, a test of their readiness to graduate from high school. What a lot of folks are hoping that the department will do is work with the legislature to just get rid of the exit exam requirement altogether. We're one of, I think, at this point, only 12 states that even has an exit exam requirement. So, there's a lot of support for that idea right now. So, we will, we will see if this can be, if this can be used as an opportunity to make some, some really positive change for our students. So, I just wanted to update everybody on that. And hello, Mr. Roslevich, you're just in time. So, we can move on to doing our appointments to committees. And for the most part, I think, stuff is going to stay the state, the same, with a few little switches here and there. So, Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola, I believe, is willing to stay the chair of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
Yes.
And then, on that committee will be Monique and Mr. Roslevich. So, that committee will stay the same. And then, Finance and Facilities will be Mr. Krieger, chairing. That again?
Yes.
Because who else likes numbers, much as, much as Mr. Krieger?
No one.
And Mr. Rog, Mr. Magaziner will stay there as well. Oh, dear, we only have three lines there. I'm going to have to put myself next to Mr. Rog, then. I will be staying on the Finance Committee as well. And then, Personnel and Communications, Judy was the chair of Personnel, so that leaves a space there. So, what we're going to go ahead and do is, Ms. Gowan is going to chair the Personnel Committee, and Ruth is going to stay on the Personnel Committee, and then we're going to hope that someone who applies for the position and ultimately takes over Judy's seat will be somebody that will mesh well with the Personnel Committee, and if not, then, you know, we may have to do some reconfiguring thereafter. But for now, I think that's where we will, that's where we will leave things. And with Ann moving on to Personnel, we were thinking that Mr. Krieger would then move over to chair, to chair Policy, which he's interested in doing, because that's another area
Thank you.
Another area of interest for him.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
And
And I think we won't have a quorum problem that we've had, where we've had five potential people on that committee.
Oh, on Policy, okay.
Right.
Right, and people can always, I mean
People can always come into the meeting, of course.
Exactly, can rotate in. Oh, excuse me. Hmm. Excuse me.
You know, speaking to that
Yes, thank you for
A while ago, a couple of months ago, I asked if maybe we could get ahead of time an agenda for the, for particular meetings, in case we were interested in attending.
Oh, okay. But Yeah, I think sometimes it's just hard for committee chairs to
No, not the committee, I think, like, Scott, don't you write the agenda?
Are you referring to all committees?
Yeah, so, like, this week is going to be, you know, the Personnel Committee meeting on Wednesday, here's the agenda, like, out to everybody. Is that something that can be done?
I think we did talk about that, I never followed it. So, I could do that, if you're okay with it.
If it's easy, if it's not difficult, that would be helpful, because then we know, oh, wait, they're talking about, you know, something
I could certainly, I could certainly do that for the Policy. Finance is more difficult, because the way the dice, the dice roll, we have that meeting right before the workshop meeting.
Right, right.
And it's just very convenient to do it as we're discussing finance beforehand.
You know, if you get to know what's on the agenda
Yeah.
Just what's on the agenda.
We do know, we do know that, we do know earlier, and I could certainly either pass it on, or Linda could send it to the whole board, because Linda makes
I can send a, I can send a preliminary, just, these are the topics, like, bullet point, rather than my whole detailed
Yes.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
That would be, that would be excellent. I'll do that for Policy also.
Okay, great, thank you.
And so, in my case, since I set the agenda mostly for Policy, Curriculum, and Personnel, I can, the Friday prior to the week when we have those meetings, just blast it out to the entire board, instead of to separate committees
to the entire Board instead of to separate committees. So, that means, for instance, on January 21st, we have a Curriculum Committee meeting on that Friday, instead of just sending it to Michelle, Rob, and Monique, I would just send it to everybody. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's perfect.
And I would think, I would think even for, like, the Discipline Study Committee, like any other committees that other Board members are sitting on, it might be good to send out those agendas as well. And maybe, what do you guys think, emailing them out versus just starting a Board folder?
Email, email's good.
Yeah, email would be better.
All right. No problem.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. So, Mark is going to Chair Policy, Ann is going to stay on Policy, and actually, Rob, I'm going to, I'm going to... Hi. Would you be willing to go on Policy?
Sure.
Yay! Because then you could represent Curriculum, Curriculum Committee on Policy. So, then, with Mark there, we automatically have somebody from Finance, Ann would be somebody from Personnel, Rob would be somebody from Curriculum, and then we don't have somebody from Equity and Excellence, but you said you would just kind of like touch base with folks as we go.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So, let's leave it there for now. And negotiations, our hands are kind of tied there, so all you folks who are on negotiations get to stay on negotiations.
Yep.
And then, names, please? Yes. So, Mr. Krieger, chairing negotiations, Ann, and Rob Ross Levich, and Michelle.
Yes.
Yes, I said Ann. Yep.
That's right.
Yep. And then Equity and Excellence is Monique as the Chair, and Rob Magaziner, and Ruth.
I don't know who's on the committees. Okay, I got it.
All right. So, that takes care of our committees. The Liaison to the Municipal, Municipal Drug and Alcohol Alliance, we have a student in that position already, correct? Okay.
Wendy, Y-A-N-G.
Y-A-N-G?
Correct.
Okay. And for Borough Public Information Committee and Highland Park TV, that's been Michelle, but Michelle and Mark are going to do a little swap. So, Mr. Krieger is going to become the liaison to HPTV and the Public Information Committee.
Yep.
And Rob Magaziner is going to stay the, ooh, ex-official member.
Yes.
That's quite a fancy title there.
Not quite official.
A member of the Educational Foundation. Liaison to the Commission for Universal Access has been Ann, and I think she's happy to stay there. Public Library is Ms. Fittipaldi. Liaison to Shared Services has been me, but there's been nothing happening there, so, okay, I'll stay there. CPAC, it's been Ruth, but there's really a CPAC now, but, you know, you'll be our...
Hopefully, there'll be another one.
You'll be our best, our best bet for finding out if that, that hopefully gets resurrected. Liaison to Highland Park Parents of Students of Color, Monique will stay in that liaison position. And Liaison to Human Relations, that has been Ann, and we'll leave Ann there. Board of Health, Michelle is going to take that over from Mr. Krieger. Mr. Ross Levich, are you happy to stay with your friends of the Green Team?
Yes.
Excellent. So, Mr. Ross Levich will stay there. Oh, and then Cable TV Advisory Committee. Mark, you get that one by default.
Oh.
And I don't think that, I don't think there's a lot. I think that's all just kind of lumped in.
That was part of HPTV, okay.
Yeah, that's all kind of lumped in.
Okay.
Why it's all separate things, I don't know. Like, this is probably one of those things we should talk to, you know, at our next meeting with Gail and Suzie, say, like, how are these? Yeah, exactly. There's probably a consolidation that can happen there. So, we'll get back to you about that, Mr. Krieger, whether you're...
Fine.
Really one-hat or three. I think it's really one.
Okay.
All right. So, that takes care of all of our, that takes care of all of our business for the meeting, which brings us to public comment. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation. Hello, good evening, Mr. Presti. I guess we'll do it.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It's good to see everybody there. Congrats to Ruth and Monique and Rob for your reelections. Glad to still have you on the Board, and Darcy as President, and Ann as Vice President. And I was really sorry to hear about Judy resigning, so, sorry to see her go. The one thing I wanted to make the Board aware of is, as I'm sure you probably know some of, if you watch the news, there's been, you know, through all the different states in our country, the Wear Red for Ed Initiative and campaign that's been going on, where, you know, it has built up a lot of steam, and different states have gotten different things out of it. New Jersey is engaging in that campaign now, because there's some big issues that, some bills before the legislature that we would like to get to the Governor's desk. So, just so you are aware, we're having Worth It Wednesdays, where we're going to wear red, and you'll see the association's going to participate, the whole state is participating in this, all the teachers and support staff. So, you'll see us in red, and you might see us gathered in a place outside and walking in together or something like that. Probably, definitely, on the, I think, the 30th, the last Wednesday, is a statewide walk-in wearing red. So, just so you're aware, this is nothing like adversarial, we're just... It's not like we're in contract negotiations or something, you know? It's just raising awareness, and I'm sure, as the Board knows, and I'm sure as Mark knows, that health care costs and Lynda are something that is very difficult to deal with. And with the passage in 2011 of Chapter 78, where all school employees, not just unioned employees, you know, have to pay quite a steep amount of the percentage of premium, one of the bills that we're really pushing for would kind of decouple that, so we would be looking at more of a percentage of your salary versus a percentage of the premium. What we've seen since 2011 is people actually taking home less money every year, making maybe what they were even making six years ago, even though they are getting some kind of raise because of the climbing health care cost. So, that's something that's really debilitating to a lot of our members. So, and then the, just so you're aware, the other two bills are about educational support staff, job justice for just cause and privatization, so we're supporting them as well. So, I just wanted to kind of bring you in on that, so you weren't surprised, like, what's going on? And, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had them, and other than that, what a great start to the year.
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Okay. We don't have any other public, so, does anyone have anything? Oh, and Lynda, I'm sorry, Rob just kind of whispered in my ear, we don't have to vote on the committee assignments and all that stuff, right? It's just the stuff that we need. Okay, just wanted to quadruple check. I figured you'd stop me if I, if I had forgotten something. Does anybody have anything for old business? Nope. Okay, no, okay. Anything for new business?
No, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Keith had said about the Red for Ed, just for everyone on the Board and in the public to make sure to pay attention to what's going on in the Los Angeles school district. There's a lot of news coming out of that district, and it's kind of the same stuff that we've dealt with here, you know, the attack on public ed generally, so pay attention to the headlines.
It's going to, it's going to get spicy real fast.
It's going to get spicy, yeah.
Super fast.
Yep.
Okay. So, no one has anything else for new business? Ladies and gentlemen, at 7:13, you are free to go. We are adjourned.
Can I get a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.